The conferences, is that to keep their licenses for any reasons or certifications for shootings, anything like that?
Yes and no.
Okay.
The hostage negotiation is part of the training matrix that we need to have.
But that goes under CLIA, right?
We need to have that to make sure that that person's up to snuff so that when they get out there and they're actually doing that with regards to our fiat component, that they're not only competent but current on their training. There are no conferences in what we're asking you for with regards to any national conferences for me.
Okay. So then I also will continue and ask if the after-school program be reinstated too? That will be what I would be asking if the council will consider bringing those items back in.
Mayor Johnson.
Yeah, I was gonna try to clarify that. My understanding is the amended Plan B passed, so all those items are out of the budget unless the committee now makes a motion to reinstate it. And I think the motion would be, as I understand it, is to reinstate the crossing guards, reinstate items regarding the CLIA certification, reinstate the District After Seven School Program. I would also, as we reinstated IML and the manager's conference, I would reinstate the chief's conference as well. And I think a motion to that effect would be in order. Am I missing any particular items?
Yeah. What about the police operating equipment, the $26,990?
That falls under, I'm sorry.
Boy, let me, a couple of different things. The crossing guards were reinstated as part of Alderman Shockey's motion last week, so we don't need to circle back to that unless you want to do it again.
No.
And the social service, the township's social service worker was reinstated as part of that motion last week as well. So the CLIA items and the chief's conference and the District Seven would need to be in there. And if you want to put the operating equipment from the equipment replacement fund in there, I have no problem with following that.
Which would be the tasers, tasers and the radar.
The tasers, the radars, the accident investigation.
So for the purposes of the benefit of the minute taker, a motion would be in order to approve the reinstatement of those items in the budget.
What was the dollar amount? You got a calculator?
I got one. $18,065 is the, is the reduction. Oh, because, wait, these are now taken out. Oh, I did it reverse. I thought everything was in here, Mayor. Everything is in here. It is confusing. Everything that's here should be in the book. Oh, but we make, because we made a motion last week is what yours. That's why I sent over the book.
What I see, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, I need to add the chief's one, but we have the education and training line for $12,300.
Yes.
We have the after-school program for $15,000. We have the equipment replacement fund for the police operating equipment of $26,990. And then the chief, your conference, is $620.
What about the township's social service?
That was included in Alderman Shockey's motion last week.
That's already in from last week.
Correct. So those four items total $54,910.
Okay, I'll make that motion. Put that back in. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in, no, on a question.
I'm sorry, but I heard the mayor say also the IML was back in too.
The $620 for, for the chief. On a question, Alderman Wesley Roy?
Got one down here. So the radars and the tasers are all in there too? Okay.
Alderman Shockey.
To help me along here, you're bouncing around an awful lot. When we're talking about the individual items, can you give the account number so I can keep up with you? I mean, you jumped around from education to training to tasers and supplies, and I can't find where tasers and supplies are. I just, if you can give, if you're talking about something, give the last five numbers of the account number so I know what you're talking about.
I think it may be easier to follow along on Plan B. That's, that's where we added it, right? Basically, because we took this out last week, because of the motion?
So if I could.
Yeah, the difficulty there though is that it doesn't, it doesn't show what we originally, well, it does have the budget, original, revised and reduction.
The way I just heard the motion, let me go back and rephrase the motion in terms of what you want to take out of the budget. Okay, and this is working off.
Let's see.
Here I can help you with the count numbers if you want. If you want. If you want. Here I can help you with the count.
Basically, this was approved last week.
I didn't get that, I looked at that tape twice, and the motion that Alderman Shockey's made was to approve the budget, Plan A, to restore for sure some of the items in Plan B, to keep the other items in Plan B, but put a hold on the expenditures until we see if the financials improve.
Exactly.
So my reading of Alderman Shockey's motion was everything in Plan B is in the budget. We just note which ones are going to be sequestered and not spent until we see if the economy improves and if the revenues come in. Is that, is that accurate?
That's what he's ordered.
That's what the vote was last week by a four to three vote. You approved all of this, this stuff, and you just said, by the way, even though it's approved, don't spend it until the finances come in.
But now.
That's what it was. That's how it was.
And that was the, the motion that I've, I listened to twice today.
That, that was the motion.
That was the motion.
That was the motion.
Right, I voted against.
That's correct.
I remember.
Now, if you want, if, if tonight you want to knock some of this stuff out forever and ever, you can do that. Or you can leave it in the budget, we'll just put a big asterisk by it, and we won't spend it until the money starts to flow in.
Me personally, take it out.
No, I don't think.
Mayor Johnson.
Let me try. Alderman Shockey, let me direct this to you. I think your motion was to approve the Plan B reductions, except you reinstated specific things you were objecting to in those reductions.
Things that other Alderman had objected to.
Right. That's my understanding of the motion, which passed, that this was approved except for those items that he objected to.
Exactly.
So we're back to, I think, the correct motion on the floor now would be to reinstate those items we were just talking about.
If that's, if that's accurate, then let me go back to this list and read to you the ones that are now out of the budget.
This is getting more confusing.
Okay.
Mr., Mayor, can I just say one thing?
Wait, let, let Mr. Dowthwaite speak first.
Going down line by line, starting with the page that says police on the Plan B budget. We're knocking out 4320 in the telephone alarm line, line item.
Yes.
We're not. Um. It's the first line under contractual services. 42011, three lines down, maintenance of buildings, we're reducing by $7,460. 42019, maintenance agreement, we're cutting that by $4,510. Going to the next page, page 113. Line item 44015, maintenance of other equipment, we're reducing by $690. 44003, books and publications, we're reducing by $350. 44039, detectives expenses, we're reducing by $235. 44032, photo supplies, we're reducing by $500. 44028, emergency services, we're reducing by $1,600. Cert training supplies and command post supplies, it says. Nobody's mentioned that so far. He asked a question. I didn't hear any recommendation that it'd be added back in. It's up to the council.
We've got $5,000 in the original budget. We're not taking the whole thing away, we're just taking $1,600 away, so we still have $3,400, right?
You've got 34, $3,400.
Right.
Yes.
So is, is that sufficient? I mean.
I appreciate everybody's concern for the safety issue. Keep in mind that we do have grant money from the state of Illinois on that, and that at this time, our command post is fully stocked and where we should be, so that's maybe something we can take the bite on right now.
And that said, those are the light items that will be scrubbed from the budget book if the motion passes.
We basically, I can make the motion, take out $19,665 out of the police budget.
That's correct.
$6655. Do you concur? That's what I got. Do I have a second? On a question, Alderman Shockey.
And just to be sure, it's, we're not excluding the taser and supplies or the radars?
No, none of that's included.
Okay, thank you.
But just to clarify, as point of order, what I think you're doing is amending the reductions.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes.
Oh. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
On the police?
No, I just want to ask one question. If we are going with Plan B, according to the first sheet he handed out, with the cuts we made in the CIP project, we have $62,642 in surplus. So why are we hacking Plan B the way we are when we got a surplus already with the budget without going in Plan B? Now we got more.
You've got $82,000 in surplus.
I mean, I, I see the point here, and I agree with you 100%, but we already cut it well enough that we got $62,642 in surplus plus what we just cut. My question is, what about all the money that wasn't spent in this year's budget? That's not back in here yet.
That will show as part of the ending balance for 2010 on a projected basis.
Okay, so do you have ballpark for what May that might be?
We typically, we typically don't spend 3% or so out of what's budgeted due to cost savings and fiscal prudence on the part of the chief and the deputy chief.
So then you add another 3% on to whatever we don't spend, so you're almost, you're in a surplus array. So this B-list, I think this might be something fall back on down the line, but we are in a surplus array big time. I mean, $62,000 plus 3% of whatever we don't spend on this year's budget. I mean, I didn't know that until we just got this figure of $62,000 to, to the good array with our cuts.
Just to clarify, when we're done, there's not an A and a B list, there's one budget. We're not going to be running two sets of books for the city of Wooddale. So at the end, there'll be one approved budget.
Well, what I'm trying to say is, why do we keep going back to B, B-list to add or plus or minus or anything like that when we already?
Because you approved that last week.
Well, I think that.
I do have a question on the police budget, and I think it's just a mistaken narrative. Senior luncheon is listed twice, once on page 112, as line item 00146642036, and then it's listed again on page 113, 00146644036.
That is a, indeed a typo. It's a $600 and some odd dollar expense, and it should be covered underneath the contractual, underneath the community services, 42036.
So it's just to amend the narrative and not the figures?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any else on the police? Alderman Lewitin?
I'd just like to try to give my personal answer to Alderman Eugene Wesley. Eugene, the city manager, Dowthwaite, said that the, the income is amorphous, and therefore so are the expenditures by, by logical assumption. So everything we do simply sets a goal, and the, the way the amorphous income and expenses come out a year from now are like an audit, to clarify how we actually did against our projections. So to try to adjust the expenses is working on the left side of the right side of the income and the expenses, which are both amorphous until booked and spent. And, and that's how I determine it, and that's why I'm going along with the rest of the council on trying to make those adjustments. That's my, my opinion to answer Eugene Wesley's question. Alder, I'm sorry, Mr. Dowthwaite, I'm presuming that I'm speaking for you. How would you, how would you rate my, my assessment of your opinion?
I'd say that's, I'd say you're pretty well spot on.
All right, next.
Next is the next tab, which is Police and Fire Commission. The first page, which is page 114, is a quick narrative. The second page is the target level, which shows a reduction of about $400. And the third page, page 116, are the line items to fund the Police and Fire Commission.
Any questions on this one? Alderman Wesley?
I have one question. Is the testing program, is that because we don't have a sergeant list now in place?
No, the sergeant's list won't expire till the next budget cycle. This is for a patrolman's list. By statute, they have to keep one in effect, and I believe that it'll be expiring December of this year. So that's where the advertising, so that we can reach out to multi-diverse segments.
Well, I mean, you got testing program for sergeant.
And that's also for that.
So it's mandatory that we have to post a list? So that's what it is? Okay, I didn't see patrolmen. Say again? Okay, that's all I wanted. Thank you.
Any other questions on that? Next. Narcotics forfeiture.
Spack a little bit in the, in the book, Narcotics Forfeiture Fund tab. Again, three pages. Page 158 is the narrative. Page 159 is the target level, and page 160 are the line items. And basically, this is money in, money out. We get money from drug seizures. We use this mostly for our canine off, our canine vet bills, leashes, dog food, actually dog food's freebie now. So it's 2,500 bucks, and that's, we just have to account for it in a separate, separate fund.
Any questions on that? Police Pension Fund.
It's near the back. Page 198 is the narrative. Page 199 is the target level summary, and page 200 are the line items, and there's not much we can do about this. This is an actuarial study determining how much we need to put in to fund the police pensions, and is largely out of our control.
I have just one, one question. I know it was quite a bit, I think it was like six, five, six million dollars. I know projected a pretty good gain. Do we know what percentage is funded now?
Just happen to have the president, the president, the vice president of the pension fund here.
I would say right now we're in between 75 and 80% funded. That was, this year we've had some considerable earnings. Our fund balance at this point compared to May 1 of this fiscal year is up almost 1.5 million, and that's through February. March, I believe, we've seen more positive growth. So we're trending the right way. It was a, it was a rough '08, '09 year, as, as everyone experienced, but we feel we were conservative enough that we staved off what could have been worse losses. We had already converted to a lot of local CDs at local banks, and now we've, starting with about July of last year, we started trending, dollar-cost averaging back into the market, and we've been able to benefit from positive swings in the market now. So just keep our regular meetings, you know, working with our investment advisor and trying to keep moving forward.
Any other questions on this? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Is that what you guys, what you guys this budget for? Is that what you're actually asking for, or am I going to have someone come back and say, well, we need more than this?
That's what we're asking for. As, as we've addressed the council before, and I believe this to be true for, for most municipal pension funds, is as of right now, the actual aerial study looks at current assets, projected growth, projected salary growth, and projected benefits of the pension, pension members. There is at all, at all times a partial unfunded liability, meaning potential growth may not meet potential payments in the future. That shortfall is amortized like a mortgage, and right now, those payments are being made up in equal payments through 2033. So to answer the question, yes, there is still an unfunded liability, but the city funds toward that each year. There was some discussion in the past of increasing that contribution to make up quicker for that unfunded liability, and that's something that, you know, would have to be decided as a policy decision. But, you know, we're looking for what our actuarial says. The actuarial, and based on funding that, paying off that unfunded liability over the next 23 years, we hope to be fully funded by 2033, and by statute, we have to.
So this is a state, what, what you put here is what the state is requiring us to give you for your pension fund, basically?
That is what our actuarial says is needed to meet it.
Any questions?
I have no more questions.
Any other questions? Next fund. That takes care of the police department. Public Works Administration is next.
Administration is next. And as John comes up, I'll go through the first couple of pages. Page 122 and 123 is the organizational chart and the narrative with the accomplishments, the objectives. Page 124 is administration's target level, which is 6.7% less than last year from $326,000 to $304,000. And page 125 and 126 are the line items that pursuant to the motion last week in Plan B have been shaved by an extra $18,500.
My question is, where is this $18,500? Central Services? No. Public Works, I got it.
It's under Public Works Administration, just before.
So basically, Public Works Administration, $18,500 has been taken out.
We've scrubbed an additional 18.5 from the budget that you see in front of you in the binder.
Okay, before I ask for questions, I see safety program here. We're knocking out $6,000. What are we talking about?
The $6,000 reduction is basically the elimination of any driver's training education for all the public works staff. Traditionally, what we do with that money is every two years, all the public work staff go through a driver's education program, whether that be snowplow-related, if they're in Street Division, or if they're just taking a normal driving training class through NIPSTA. It kind of varies on what their workload is or what vehicles they primarily drive. That was that elimination. That $6,000 incorporated, all that being eliminated.
Bottom line, our drivers basically have the same drivers for the last few years, correct? Or are we changing guys over, putting new guys on the plows?
For the most part, everyone, once they're in a department, they stay in that department. Their roles, responsibilities have not changed dramatically. We do have some relatively new staff in the last two years, probably in the neighborhood of seven, that probably did not, or if half of them may have gone to this driver's training, I don't have the exact number who hasn't and who has. It is good to have that refresher. We included in there, we felt it was important, but in order to make these cuts, we realized something had to be eliminated, so unfortunately, that was one of the items we did select. But we do recommend, Irma does recommend those driver's training classes. Some of them are through Irma, and it's all part of.
The insurance?
Not per se part of the insurance. It's, I, I, I don't believe I can speak to whether or not that will affect our insurance, but, you know, those recommendations have all been made to us by Irma. They are Irma classes, and I can pass.
Just to speak to the insurance point, fewer accidents will help keep our insurance rates lower because we have less claims to process and less, lower experience ratio to factor into the modifier. The Irma calculation's kind of confusing, but suffice it to say, fewer accidents equals better rates, just like with your own personal auto insurance.
So maybe this isn't something we want to get rid of, especially if we got some new guys that need some training. I would say keep it in unless, unless there's an objection. Alderman Wesley, you are first.
Oh, I'm going to ask that all $18,500 stays in due to the fact we already have a surplus in the budget. I, I am asking that all items stay in. Of a B.
Public Works Administration.
Public Works, the B-list.
Alderman Coles?
John, when you hire a new guy, just, what kind of driver's license do they have to have? A D?
Everyone in Public Works has a CDL Class B.
CDL license.
CDL Class B license, correct?
All right.
With tanker endorsement, and may or may not have tanker endorsement depending on the division they work in, but yes, they all have a CDL Class B license, correct?
CDL, okay. CDL means they can drive trucks. All right, okay. I agree with Mr., with Wesley that all this stuff stays in.
Alderman Shockey, you're next.
I thought, correct me if I'm mistaken, but I thought that we put back the 6,000 safety programs last week.
No.
That's one of the things that I had mentioned, because I did subtract that from the total. But I didn't, I mean, you know, we're still in a shortfall, and even though we're showing, as you say, $62,000 in the black, I still don't see the need for, for $8,000 in conferences as meetings, when, when the department director said that we could cut it by $5,000 before. Now, the safety part, I, I agree, we should put back in. But why, why are we putting back in conferences and meetings if they're not necessary to keep licenses? as you say, 62,000 in the black, I still don't see the need for, for $8,000 in conferences as meetings, when, when the department director said that we could cut it by $5,000 before. Now, the safety part, I agree, we should put back in. But why, why are we putting back in conferences and meetings if they're not necessary to keep licenses and certifications up? We're just going back to what we had before, just like we're not having a problem with the state money. I did intend last week, and I, I thought, I looked at it too, and I thought I did take out, I did put that 6,000 back in for the safety program, but not the balance of those deductions, reductions you had made. And also, there's still $4,000 in overtime pay. And who was, who was that for? I think we talked about it last week a little bit.
That's for the Public Works Executive Assistant, and that's the first item that we removed.
For the Public Works?
Executive Assistant. There's only two employees, in theory, in the Public Works Administration, myself and the Public Works Executive Assistant. I, of course, can't get overtime, so that was just a contingency based on if we had any additional emergencies or any overtime work that needed to be done, it was a surplus of money that was placed in there.
Okay, so there isn't a third? I thought you were, there was a third person as well at the other facility?
Correct, there is another clerical staff at the North Plant Facility, and that is paid for out of the Utilities Division, out of Water and Sewer Fund.
I can understand, I can understand, you know, the field crew with overtime, but I don't understand an office person for overtime. The whole thing is, we're supposed to be getting the eight hours work done in eight hours. Is it, is she getting more than what she can handle?
Well, currently, right now, the way we had it in the budget was solely for emergencies. If she had to come in, work the phones for any particular reason, if there was any work that was over and above the normal time for Public Works, 7 to 3:30, that, that's what was originally placed in there as the reasons behind overtime. It was not something that was normally, generally taken. It was something that was only approved by myself or passed.
But we did take $3,067 last year, correct? For overtime for that person?
Correct.
So that's, that looks like a pretty standard thing. Is there any other office administrative staff that gets automatic overtime put in
There are, trying to think, there are only four staff members of that nature throughout the city.
That are not crews, that are not people who go out on the street?
Correct, that were in the secretarial Administrative Assistant, Executive Assistant realm. One of them being John's lady, who got the overtime. One is in the manager's office. The line item for that in the admin budget is zero. I believe the executive assistant in there takes comp time instead of the overtime pay. There's the lady in, at the North Plant in Public Works. I believe if she ever gets anything, it's just overtime, very minimal. And then the chief's secretary has some money budgeted in there for overtime for herself, as well as the minute taking that she does for the committee meetings.
It just, this one seems to be, you know, lots, more excessive than the other ones. It's a little bit, but all of a sudden, we're jumping up to 4,000 in overtime.
Can I ask a question? John, this is strictly, the 4,000 strictly because when we have emergencies, flooding, microburst, that kind of stuff where, that's, that's the only time you would use this anyways. Even if we take it out of the budget, if there's a microburst or a flood, she may have to stay, correct?
Correct, I.
We're not going to send her home because we took it out of the budget.
As in the budget in 2000, this past year, there was $6,000 budgeted. I did include, I thought that she would, that she would approximately reach about $4,000. Right now, it's trending about 2,800. Again, that's only approved based on my recommendation. If she comes to me and says she has additional work she would like to get done, that comes through me and for emergency services. So those are the only two times that, that overtime is authorized, either by myself or based on an emergency.
Basically, right now, this is out because we took it out last week in the vote. So the only reason she's going to get overtime is there's a flood, there's a microburst or something, and you're going to need her, and you're going to tell her, hey, I need you to stay. Bottom line. So we don't even have to worry about this line item, about putting it in there or not.
Unfortunately, there would not be a contingency line item to pay her out of then. If that line item was zeroed out, there would be no.
There would have to be a budget amendment, right? Do we need to, I mean, do we want to need to put it in? We'll put it in if it doesn't get you.
You can argue this both ways. You can put it in, and just because it's in the budget doesn't mean it's going to get spent.
Right.
On the other hand, if it's not in there, and all of a sudden, we have a problem, John's going to be coming to me saying, hey, man, I need some overtime. I need to, I need to spend some overtime to keep Ally in here. And I'm going to say, okay, where are you going to find it from? Because it's not in this line item. You've got to show me you can rake it up from someplace else. Now, in a budget this size, can we rake it up? It's a $12 million general fund budget, gentlemen. You know, can we find an extra $500 for an overtime bill? Of course we can. If we put 2,000, 3,000, 4,000 in the budget, are we going to spend it? Not just because it's in there. I mean, let, if I can digress for just a moment, my first job in high school was working for the Air Force. I was a gopher at a woodworking hobby shop. And at the end of every fiscal year, the sergeant in charge of the woodworking hobby shop would run around in a tizzy, saying, oh, my God, I've got $2,000 in this line item for a bandsaws, and if I don't spend it, I'm going to use it, I'm going to lose it. So let's go out and order $2,000 worth of bandsaws, just so I can get it off the books. We don't run it that way. If we don't need it, we don't spend it. You know, we're not going to spend down to zero, just because if we don't use it, we lose it. On the other hand, if it's not in there, then that puts us in a position of having to scrape around a little bit to try and find it when and if it's there, and if we need it. So, you know, pick your poison. You know, you want to put it in there, and if we don't spend it, we won't. Or take it out, and if we have to, then we scrape around at the last minute and try and figure it out.
Okay, going on, education and training in the conferences. Some of this stuff for keeping up with your licenses, John, like the police chief? I mean, the manager had a something, there's something in here that, you know, you need to keep some type of certificate or something?
Correct, and I did include those in there, basically at their bare minimum levels, what it would take to complete necessary CEUs for the various staff members. All other cursory training is out. Anything that's supervisor-related, that's not mandatory, that they don't have to have either to keep their water license, their wastewater license, their ARBRA certification, their forklift training for some of our public work staff, any sort of aerial lift truck training that needs to be done each year, that we're mandated to have X amount of people do that. Any of those items were left. Anything else, any other electrical safety training, or anything that's just something that I'd like to send staff to, or I encourage them to go to, all that has been eliminated.
Okay. Alderman, Roy Wesley.
Okay, since we're on this thing about overtime, I'm probably stepping over the boundaries here, but I'm going to try it. Brad, what's the average a month that this person's been getting on overtime? Hours?
What's that?
This one particular person?
Well, this is one person.
It is. Boy, on average per month? You know, it varies payroll to payroll.
You want to use year, that's fine.
What's that?
You want to use the year, that's fine.
Well, I mean, you know, if you take, ah, boy, I mean, you know, I'd have to go back and look and see. I mean, you know, if John says it's trending towards, you know, 2,800 for the year, you know, we could probably take her hourly salary and just do the math on it and figure it out real quick. Boy, but to sit up here and try and give you an average per payroll or per month, I'd have to go back and.
We'll come back to it then, another time. My, my point on this, I don't think there's an executive secretary, they're called, right, is in any of the budget for overtime, not one.
There is some for the Police Department, for the chief's executive secretary.
But she also does the night out and.
And she chooses to take her overtime hours in overtime pay. Some of them, maybe some of it's comp time. My executive assistant chooses to take the time that she works past 4:30 in comp time. If she chose to take it in overtime, you'd see money in my budget for overtime. But that's her preference.
Okay. My point on this, we, we just gone through this thing last week, this Plan B, which I don't care for. And we did all these cuts. We spent hours here last week going through this. We just went through the police, he did his cuts, and now we're just going to put everything back in that we're, we're doing. If someone could definitely tell me that the state of Illinois is not going to cut our sales tax, cut our income tax, or anything else that's coming to this city, if you could put that in writing and guarantee that, I would be in favor of putting everything back. But not until then. No one could tell you the future. So my next question is to Mr. Kramer. What is the necessary things in this budget for health, safety, welfare, that you actually need that was cut?
Speaking just in the Public Works Administration.
That's the only department you, you're in charge of, correct?
No, I've actually got five other.
Well, we'll go to that later on.
The safety program, and I would respectfully ask to have the $500 for education and training placed back in to bring it up to its original 2,000.
Define the education and training, as in necessary licenses?
Not necessary as far as licenses, but necessary in the sense of, I like to keep my staff up to date on their training, both with respect to NIMs training and other things that could not be done currently with that $500 reduction.
Okay.
Anything else?
Is that the only thing?
John, what about the safety program?
Correct, that is the first one I said, the safety program and the education and training. And let me correct myself by saying it's 1,500, not $500.
Those are the only two, right? I'm sorry.
As far as health and safety, to answer your question, correct.
Okay. I just.
Mayor Johnson.
Just to be consistent here, is there a conference that you attend that got cut?
Correct, there was.
What would that amount be?
Depending on the location, on where it is in the country, would kind of depend on how much it is. I wouldn't imagine it would be more than $750.
So if you want to be consistent, most would be in order to reinstate funding for education and training to the 2,000, reinstate funding to the safety program to the total amount of 7,000, and conference and meetings to 3,750.
No way. Oh, I got you. Cut. So we're going to reduce. No, conference and meetings.
And everything else stays out, correct?
As far as the overtime.
Overtime stays out.
The overtime is, is still out, is what you're telling me.
Take it out, we'll deal with it when it comes out.
Right, okay, that's no problem. So basically, education and training, keep the extra 750 for conference and meetings and the 6,000 for the safety program. All in favor with that?
Aye. How much is the total on that? My answer is.
The total of those three items to restore to the budget is 8,250. The remainder of those items that will be removed from the budget is 10,250.
Anything else on that? Should we do?
I got one.
Wait, wait. Public Works Streets?
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
You got something else?
Brad?
Yes, Brad.
Just for clarification, did you do a voice vote on that, or just a pronoun that I hear?
Well, the mayor says we really don't have to.
Yes, there was an affirmative vote, yes.
Well, we don't need to make a motion, the mayor said, because when we pass the budget, that'll be our motion. Right, Mayor? Correct?
Well, as you're going along, just so you know, you have a consensus, you can take voice votes. But at the end, when we approve the budget, it'll be a roll call.
So we don't have to make the motion?
All right. Bottom line. Next tab is Street Vision. The next tab over. Page 127 and 128 are your narratives.
And this one's got a pinky.
Page 129 is the target level, which is down about 5 percent from last year, same number of employees. Page 130 was a request, which I initially recommended, and you took out last week, which was the light tower. So based upon the motion last week, that is not in the budget anymore. Page 131 is a request for $80,000 for an emergency response vehicle, which I did not recommend. Page 132 is a request for a leaf vacuuming truck at $210,000, which I did not recommend. And page 133 and 134 are the line items associated with this cost center.
Anybody have any questions on this one? Basically, we already took out $9,000 for the.
$9,000 last week, and I've not, I have recommended against anything else that he's asked for over and above target level.
Okay, so on this one, we, I, so far, we put in gypsy moth spraying.
You go into the.